All right, I have five o'clock, uh, re- ready to roll. All right. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, uh, Thursday, March 11, 2021 Auburn Planning Commission Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. And ask, uh, Amber to do a roll call, please.
Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Phil Chancellor.
Here.
Jana Jaeger. Mac Laszlo.
Here.
Marcus Marshall.
Here.
Warren McGord.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Bob Wright and Bob.
Here.
Okay, before we get started, I'd just like to go over, uh, our process briefly, um, and then we'll, uh, continue with the agenda. So during the, uh, plan- this planning commission meeting, uh, the commission's going to be presented with, uh, agenda items by the city planning department. Uh, the representative for each of these items will have an opportunity to make comments if they'd like. Or and or answer some specific questions from the commission, and then I'll open the public hearing as appropriate because not everything requires a public hearing. But I'll open the, uh, the public hearing, and that's when we would like everyone to be heard. We asked to do, keep your time to five minutes, and please keep your comments relevant to the case at hand. After everybody has spoken, I'll close the public hearing. Address any open questions there might be, and then the representative and staff can have an opportunity to answer any of those questions, um, or others that we may pose. Up the floor to the commissioners for discussion motions and a vote. The commission will, uh, is, the commission will vote based on local and state laws, the city's comprehensive plan 2030, and to the general good of the community. Now, there is a specific role we have, um, in this hearing process that are related to subdivision plaits. And so since we do have a number of those tonight, I want to make sure there's some understanding about our role here. Uh, by Alabama statute, the municipal planning commission, such as ours is, um, we are the final approval authority for subdivision plaits. With regards to those plaits, the commission acts as a, as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws, the city zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations that we have previously adopted. While the public hearings are required on each plat, we will, and we welcome, you know, any and all public comments to those. You have to, we want to make sure that you understand that the, the commission's authority is strictly limited in these, with the subdivision plaits to confirming that the plaits meet or exceeds specific requirements that are codified in law, regulate, or the regulations that are previously mentioned. Since we're still on Zoom, the way this will work is when we open a public hearing, I, there's a opportunity for you, if you're interested in speaking, you can raise your hand electronically. And when I see the hand raised, then I can activate your microphone, and that's how we'll go through the public hearing in that way. And I ask that anybody that will, will speak, please give their name and address for the record. So our first, um, item on the agenda tonight is citizens communication. Now, this is just a, this is a specific, um, time for anybody that would like to speak on, there's two different categories of things we're looking to speak at this time. One is something that's not even on the agenda. So if you have something you want to speak about to the commission that is not on our agenda, now's the time. Also, if you're interested in talking about anything on the consent agenda. Currently, we have four items, uh, in then, as in addition to approval of our minutes. A couple of these items, uh, I'm going to move to move, move to have, uh, a little more, um, discussion and pull them into new business. So we'll be hearing about the subdivision regulations and the preserve phase five B in a little more detail. So there's no need to speak on those at this time if you're interested. Well, if you're interested on the consent agenda, please do speak. So raise your hand if you're interested in talking at this time. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to move on to old business. Uh, old business has one item, MEMS Trail amenity area, PL 2021 00051. This item has been withdrawn by the applicant, and no further action will be taken under old business. Now, we're going to move the consent agenda. What I'd like to do at this time is, uh, make motions to move two of these items to new business. And so I'll start by, uh, making a motion from the chair to move subdivision regulations, uh, PL 2021 00139. Uh, I would like to move that to the new business, uh, agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay, that motion carries. We're going to move that in a new business. Also, I would like to, uh, move, make a motion from the chair to move, um, item number five, the preserve five B, uh, PL 2021 00146. I'd like to move that to new business as well. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. Now, onto the consent agenda. Uh, we have three remaining items on the consent agenda. The first are the approval of, of previous meeting minutes, the packet meeting minutes of February 8th, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of February 11th, 2021. Then there are two annexations. The first one is the Marsh Annexation, PL 2021 00112. And then, uh, the Freeman Annexation, PL 2021 00101. This does not require a public hearing. Does staff have any, um, thing they'd like to say about these two annexations?
Yes, sir. Um, I believe it was discussed in packet meeting on Monday. The two annexations are adjacent to one another and south of existing city limits.
Discussion or motion?
Approved. Consent agenda, as you described, with the three items of minutes and item three and four.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, the consent agenda carries. Okay, on the new business, and the first one we will talk about is subdivision regulations. Uh, PL 2021 00139. Uh, I have two staff that are presenting, uh, is it you, Katie, or, or Allison Frazier?
I give Allison the honors this evening.
Ms. Frazier, off, you, over to you.
Good afternoon. Uh, what's before you is a recommendation to modify the subdivision regulations relative to final plaits. Uh, the request is to modify the time that a phase can be carried over from two years to four years. This does not create our annual bond renewal process or evaluation of outstanding improvements. We will continue to do those annually, and if those bond amounts need to change, increase, or decrease, we will still do that on an annual basis. This will just allow us to be a little bit more in line with what the market is doing and minimize some of the bond extensions that you have been receiving recently for waivers. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, just to, um, make sure I, I understand this. So the bond will be, it'll be good for four years, but every year you will review it, and if, you know, basically the economy's changed and it may cost more, you'll, you'll gather more, uh, bond funding for that, that, for those.
That's correct. That, that process will not change. This, this essentially allows us to administratively renew it for four years before they need to request either waive or complete the development.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. This does not require a public hearing, so, um, any discussion or motion?
For approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, motion carries. Um, now we're on to the, uh, the preserve phase five B waiver request, a PL 2021 00146. Ms. Kennedy.
Yes, good evening. This is a waiver request, um, to remove a condition from a previously approved final plat of, you know, preserve subdivision and PDD. It's for phase five B, which you can see here. The condition that they would like to have removed was from an engineering comment stating that an updated development agreement must be executed prior to the final plat being signed. Uh, so when this was heard by you and approved by you, there were some talks with the reserve developers on an ongoing development agreement, and they decided to make this a condition. Over since that time, they've discussed it a little bit more and got more information, and they have requested that this be removed, and any additional comments, all that Allison and Scott.
Okay. So this one does not require a, uh, public hearing either, so it's basically our time to discuss if we have, uh, something to say. I think we went through a lot of, uh, discussion, you know, about the basic process. One of the questions I had, uh, was, do we, can, can, uh, somebody, one of the staff elaborate a little bit more on what sorts of things are considered in the development agreement?
Um, typically, the development agreement covers off-site improvements, things that are not directly, directly attributed to a phase. Um, and in the case of the preserve, an example of that would be widening a frontal road. So typically, a development agreement outlines off-site infrastructure. It also identifies who's responsible for that and who will pay for that. Um, that could be the construction or finances, and that's either going to be the developer or the city or a combination thereof. So in a, in a big picture sense, they cover, um, infrastructure and responsible parts.
Not like that. Not, not every development requires a development agreement. Only those who, which require all site improvements to support that development. Many, many of the developments you approved don't require development.
And then I guess I'll go back and ask a question just to kind of make sure, stay, why we, why it was approved with, uh, the requirement to begin with, and why we're pulling it out, or going back to the decision we already made to pull it out. So I just, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, in 2017, I think it was the development did an amended PDD and an updated traffic impact study. That traffic impact study warranted additional improvements, uh, that, that are currently required by the development based on the phases and build out outlined in the traffic impact study. The original development agreement from, uh, I'll call the original preserve, the original preserve had a development agreement, and they have since completed all of those. So what triggered this new agreement was the updated traffic impact study, updated build out schedule. And as Stephanie mentioned, as we were approving phases currently in 2019, 2020, is when we saw the need for the new agreement, which is what prompted this comment.
Phil. This is Warren. Can, can?
Yeah, go ahead, Warren. We can hear you.
Oh. The, for years, the planning commission used to deal with these projects that would come in, some of them rather large scale. And we would, uh, specify, uh, certain things that the developer had to do. Uh, and it got to be a very technical debate often, and so we decided, the planning commission did, uh, in agreement with the city staff some years ago, that we would step out of that actual process of negotiating what, uh, off-site infrastructure was required and what else, who should pay for which part of that off-site, um, infrastructure. That way, uh, the development agreement was something that they could work, sit down the technical people of the city as well as an administration and the developer, and they could work out how this would work. Often, we would pass these saying that they must, uh, execute a, a, uh, development agreement, which means it sort of forces the developer to the table with the city. However, in the preserve has been one of the most complicated, long-scale PDDs that we have, both in size and in time and in unusual circumstances. When it was first approved, uh, they started, uh, excavating to put in utilities and roads, and they ran into tremendous amount of rock that required a lot of blasting and a lot more extra cost. And, uh, this is also prior to the housing recession and all these other things that have taken place in the market since then. So this is a very complicated project. We've got another significant number of acres left there. And it seems to me that if we, 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 the, the city is satisfied, they've met the requirements that were needed in the original, uh, development agreement, and therefore if we waive this, it starts us anew for the rest of the project. So the city can recoup whatever is necessary uh, in the future, um, development agreements, or the rest of the property just won't get developed. So I think this is not a, it's a complicated thing, but it's not a bad thing to do, and so it's, it's certainly worthy of our consideration.
I.
View is a favorable process at this point, Mr. McCord, Dr. McCord?
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that, that the, the infrastructure that is necessary has been dealt, done and completed. And, uh, so the final plat can be signed without any further development agreement seems to me to be fine if the city, if the, if the administration is fine with it, and I think they are.
Good.
And the only item that's conditional is, uh, work from a traffic study. That's the only outside infrastructure that would, would be waived at this point?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not wa- we're not waiving any, any of the requirements. Those things will still come into play as the phases that warrant them are developed.
All right, this is only concerning this particular phase.
Yes. Any future phases would have to, uh, be dealt with, with another, uh, development.
Agreement.
Correct.
Ms. Reese?
Yes, I have a question. So in, um, this development agreement that has expired, and while five B doesn't, it kind of seems to be out there sitting by itself, would it have been based on a number of lots for the original, you know, development agreement? Would it have been okayed and processed through the expired development agreement is one of my questions.
Uh, the, the, the prior development agreement that expired in, uh, February this year is just, um, is a 15-year agreement. I think one thing to keep in mind on these development agreements, there are specific, um, infrastructure improvements. So it's a contract between the city, that the city council authorized, and the, uh, developer. So there's specific things that they have to do. I think is, is, is Allison had mentioned and is Warren had said that the, those improvements were done many years ago. So they had actually satisfied the elements of the agreement, you know, probably within five years after it was executed. Is that right? Right? So.
Probably.
So roughly about five years. So basically 10 years, the development agreement did not terminate, but there wasn't any requirements. There was no protection for the city for them being under development agreement. There was no protection for them being under development agreement. They still have to comply with our regulations. The development agreement is just a contract to execute, or how those all site improvements are going to be executed for that development. And I think, um, going back, you know, to Phil's earlier question, the reason that, that we, we, you know, collaborated amongst ourselves and agreed to pull this particular phase out of the development agreement was because if this is the last phase that develops for the preserve, and I think Warren was kind of alluding to this, is that, um, that none of those improvements that were identified in the traffic studies that Allison mentioned will be warranted. And so at some point down the road, like five to eight years, those, you know, those improvements will start kicking in, they'll be warranted. So we'll have them covered with the new development agreement that, that we've got to a final draft form to work with the developers. And so, you know, it's, there is a consortium of few people we have to work with for that because one thing about development agreements, we do tie them to the land, so they run with the land, so that if the property is sold, those requirements still stand with those. We don't have to work back, going back and renegotiating the new development. So that's, that's why we're, you know, felt comfortable with allowing this to move on because we still got 609 lots to, to work on, and this development itself in its, in its own would not have a negative, you know, effect on, on the improvements that were.
Okay. I know. Oh, go ahead.
I was just saying, okay.
Okay. Well, I, I guess we have had quite a long discussion about this over multiple days. And, um, you know, I, I def- I feel, you know, better about understanding what it is and why we're doing it and all that. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with it too. So, or is there any further discussion or emotion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend approval item five on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Amber, can you give us a roll call, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Laszlo?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Let's move on to the rest of new business. And then that will be, we'll start off with an annexation, the Landings at Academy Drive Annexation, PL 2021 00109. Mr. Howell?
I will be filling in for Mr. Howell. Um, this is, uh, one of three requests related to this property. The first request, as you mentioned, is an annexation. The subject property is owned by Perryman Hill LLC. It is located, uh, at the terminus of Academy Drive here. And currently in the outside of the city limits, requesting annexation. Here is an exhibit showing the subject property. And an aerial of the land as it exists today. Staff recommends approval. It does meet the two criteria for annexation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this does not require a public hearing for, um, for your information. Discussion, comments, motion?
I move for approval. Landings at Academy Annexation.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. Um, can we go ahead and do a roll call? Amber?
Sure. Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Laszlo?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. On to item number seven, the Landings at Academy Drive. This is PL 2021 00107. And it is requesting a rezoning from rural, as we annexed it in just now, to DDH. And so, Mr. Kip?
Sure. Um, this area in green here that was, um, just recommended for annexation is the portion of the property that's being requested to be rezoned from rural to DDH. There is a subsequent request for an additional portion of the property, um, that we'll get to in a minute, but for this request, they're recommending rural to be, or they're seeking rezoning from rural to DDH. The future land use designation is low density residential, which allows, uh, four dwelling units per acre. And the, uh, maximum density in DDH is 5.5 dwelling units per acre for performance and four dwelling units per acre for conventional. The applicant has provided us with a lot layout showing, um, generally the concept of what they'd like to do here, which is, uh, conventional, single-family. Approximately 90 lots, and that would be on a, uh, subject to your review at, at the next planning commission or, or one thereafter. But for now, they're just requesting the rezoning. Again, here's the subject property and an aerial.
We have the, uh, representative here. Does it look like?
Um, I'm not sure.
Walter Dorsey's raising his hand. Okay. Go ahead and come off, uh, mute there, Mr. Dorsey.
I am representing both engineering on these three items on the agenda pertinent to this property.
Okay. You have anything you want to say or just answer questions?
I'm here to answer questions if there are any.
Okay. I appreciate that. We'll keep, keep you in mind then.
I did, um, fail to mention, we did receive, uh, communication from Lee Scott Academy two representatives just with concerns about, I believe those emails were forwarded to you all about, um, buffering concerns with having Al came up against the, the school.
Okay.
Just wanted to provide that.
Okay, well, this requires a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, and the public hearing is, uh, specifically for the rezoning from rural to BDH. Uh, Mr. Dr. Cox, welcome. All you have to do is unmute and you can speak.
Thank you. I'm, I'm Stan Cox. I have the privilege to serve as the head of school for Lee Scott Academy, located at 1601 Academy Drive here in the city of Auburn.
And can you give us your address, please? Your home address?
My, my home address is 608 North 8th Street in Opelika, Alabama.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, but certainly, uh, thank you for allowing us to have input into this meeting. Um, we did not survey our parents because we received notice right before we dismissed for spring break. However, we do plan to reach out to our parents to let them know about the rezoning and the, and our concerns for this rezoning project. The, our, our biggest concern, of course, is safety of our students and of our facilities and athletic venues. Prior to the clearing of this development, uh, Lee Scott Academy. Lee Scott Academy enjoyed a heavily wooded area that provided screening and security for our pre-K and kindergarten playground, our early childhood playground and our middle school playground. Since the clearing of this property, everyone has direct access to our, to our school buildings, the playgrounds and our athletic venues. While I understand that conditional zoning is not proper in the state of Alabama, we would ask that the developer work with the school in finding some way that we could resolve this concern possibly through fencing or something. Our other concern is that it is our understanding that this property is going to find its way all the way to Shelton Mill and Dean Road. We asked that the developer begin the project at the Shelton Mill Road because right now it appears the only access to this property is Academy Drive, which is at the front entrance of our school. We have one way in and one way out, and that is at Academy Drive. If you can picture this, over 700 students and approximately 90 staff members find their way to our campus every morning. That's in addition to the other residents in the area finding their way to work in school and also the staffing at the assisted living that's close by. This goes on every morning. 400 of those students are lower school. So those parents will come onto campus, drop off their children and then come out. So that we would ask for a traffic impact study to see if there, if it's feasible to find some other way to access besides right there at Academy Drive. What we also need to understand is that at the end of the school day at three o'clock, there are 700 students who are leaving the campus. And then 30 to 45 minutes later, the, the teaching faculty leaves. And this is not counting the sporting events. So for example, in spring, right now, we have six sports and 13 teams who play on the fields that you could see from this image. And visiting teams come in. So our fans come, the other team's fans come. And we have four soccer teams, two baseball teams, two softball teams and tracks that could be going on at the same time. Also tournaments take place on our campus. So this is a, the concern is for traffic. The school has taken on the burden of, burden of financially providing a traffic person every day so that we can make sure the traffic flow is, is adequate and timely for everyone. The school people as well as those who are just finding their way to, to work. We ask that the planning commission, one, provide a traffic impact study to see. Ask the developer, could they begin their project at Shelton Mill Road, knowing eventually it would find its way to Academy Drive? And then have the developer work with the school in a way that we could provide that security and safety that we once enjoyed. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else that would like to speak on this? Rezoning? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. And I will mention the fact that, um, you know, unfortunately, what all said is before the planning commission right now has to do with rezoning of the property. And we have there, once we see the subdivision plats and how the, the properties are going to be laid out, that's when we can best answer some of your, the questions that were raised, including the impact of the traffic study, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Frazier, but we don't, we can't, we don't put a traffic study into place until the, the plats come through, or can we do something that will have, that we can at least look at the current state on Academy Drive?
No, the rezoning in and of itself does not trigger a traffic impact study if they submit or when they submit a preliminary plat.
Okay, so that's, that's what's, so a traffic study, you know, for the most, since it's such a large property, you will see a traffic study, but the timing of that is, you know, out in the future somewhere. So though, some of those plans remain to be, remain to be seen. So. Okay, so to the commission, um, any questions, comments, motion?
Do you have a, I have a quick question. Um, with a school, I know it's, I know this is a private school, but is, is there no standard buffer, no matter which rezone, rezoning it may get? Is there a, to a school relationship?
There is not, um, not specifically for school to residential, but typically the density and the intensity of residential uses like the single family next to a school would not warrant a buffer. So, you know, the, the school property could look at providing their own fencing if they wanted to, or once the plat comes in, that could be, you know, something that's looked at further. The lot layout that was provided, and that's not a, you know, it's not binding, it's purely a conceptual, you know, layout of it, does show about a 40 foot wide open space area in here. That's not to say it couldn't be clear cut or that it could require a fence or anything like that, but there is a, a little bit of, of buffer provided. But that's, you know, not, not binding on them to do that.
It sounds like an opportunity for the developer and the school to kind of get together and talk this through some.
And I have, I have one more question. I'm sorry. The future land use was four acres per unit, for, I mean, four units per acre, correct?
Yes, that's the, the future land use designation of low density residential.
Okay, and then DDH has that four units per acre, but you'd have to do conventional, correct?
They would not be required to. So if they came in with a development and the, the lot that they have is very much lower than, you know, it's much closer to two dwelling units maker, if, if that. But if the property is rezoned to DDH, they could do up to five and a half dwelling units per acre with a performance subdivision.
Yeah.
I don't believe that's the intent. Five and a half is pretty high for what they're looking to do.
DDH does carry with it the single family definition.
Correct. Yeah, no more than two unrelated occupants. And just for information purposes, they do propose some additional connections out of here. Not at this time, this phase, but only use Academy Drive. But in the, in the long term, they do intend to have further connections.
And then the white, okay, I know we're on aerial right now, but how close are we to Opelika city limits? Is that the white on the, over the other map?
Um, let's see. It's, it'd be up here further. Well, you can't, probably can't see my mouse.
That white right there is.
It's probably up in here. And over here. This, this goes up to 280 and then, um,
I think all of that up there is county.
Yeah, this is all, this is all currently in the county. They, they, a different property owner owns this. So it's not, they don't actually have the ability to connect through there, through D.
Okay, those are all my questions. Thanks.
And I assume, I assume that whenever they submit the plat, it's up to the developer, what side they want to start from or whatever. It sounds like they're going to start on the side that connects to Academy first, as far as your understanding is.
Yeah, that's our understanding is that they really the only access they have right now is Academy Drive.
Do I have a motion?
I move that PL 00107, the landings at Academy Drive rezoning rule to DDH be recommended for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Amber, please roll call.
Um, I think Robin has been dropped.
Yeah.
He asked to do that back in.
Okay, Chancellor?
Yes.
Lazimby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. It looks like we have another, um, we talked about having four against or abstain. I guess we have to have Zoom as a reason now too, right? All right, let's hang in there, group. Okay, so the next one, uh, number eight, Landings at Academy Drive, PL 2021 00108. Now, this is also another rezoning of a partial of the, I assume that's the, the purple spot right there. We're going to rezone that from CDB to DDH and keep it all the same zoning designation. So let's see, Logan, Logan Kip?
Yes, sir. That pretty much summarizes it there. I'm proposing to remove a portion of this land that's currently owned by East Alabama Healthcare Authority. It's currently zoned CDB, um, which is appropriate for commercial uses and a lot, a lot of residential uses as well. But it's a primarily higher intensity use or zoning district. They're proposing to remove it from this property and add it to the overall development site. And they would like to reset it from CDB to DDH just to have the same zoning designation throughout the development. And also, uh, I presume to get the family definition as well. Does meet the future land use plan and staff recommends approval.
Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time on the rezoning from CDB to DDH. If you would like to speak, raise that electronic hand. Okay, seeing, whoop, I do see a hand. Ms. Waldrop, Lynn Waldrop. Over to you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, so this is Lynn Waldrop, and I'm also representing Lee Scott Academy. At 1601 Academy Drive, and I personally live at 724 Wright's Mill Road in Auburn, Alabama.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'd like to ask a question of why we are not seeing a master plan for the entire property and annexing the entire property to Shelton Mill Road at this time, rather than just doing the, the pieces.
Okay. We will address questions with the, when I close the public hearing. So is that just that question? Because we can do that.
And then obviously the statements that Dr. Cox made, I think he perfectly addressed the concerns we have, but those concerns don't address the specific property.
Okay, all right. Does that wrap up what your concerns are?
That is, that does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and I will, uh, address that question, that legitimate question to the staff. I guess that's the choice of a developer to put a master plan in there. Is that the case?
Yes, sir. That would be a voluntary option. They could, I mean, they're not requesting to rezonate the PDD or have a formal land development district in place. They could certainly provide a, you know, overall idea of what they plan to do. And I think they have yeah, as a requirement for the subdivision plat, if that's something that you'd like to see, I think that could be a, a request.
Okay.
Not binding, but a, a master development plan showing the street connections and the overall layout of the subdivision is needed when a development is built in phases and is this large.
Yeah, I think that's probably going to be a good idea when the, the time is right for that. Well, would that just be a a request by the commission to do a, you know, we're not trying to create a PDD out of this.
No, no, they'll just provide that along with the first subdivision plat.
Okay, as a matter of course, I mean, is that something?
Right.
Okay, well, that'll give us some idea that once, once they, you know, the thought has been, you know, it's been engineered and it's gone through and they've decided what the subdivision plat is, then they can provide that with us. That'll provide everybody a lot of good information. Okay. Any more comments, questions, or motion?
I move to approve item eight on the agenda.
I have a motion in a second. Amber, please roll call.
Did Robin make it back?
I did. I'm sorry. Technical difficulties.
Understand.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Lazimby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, item number 10, Links Crossing Phase Three, PL 2021 00114. It's a final plat approval. Ms. Kennedy?
Good evening. If this is a revised preliminary plat first, for that Links Crossing Phase Three, it is located in DDH zoning. The original preliminary plat came to you in 2019. It has since expired, so they're looking for a revised approval. They've reduced the density by about four units. So we've not had any issues, comments or calls about this.
Yeah, I misspoke. This is item number nine, PL 2021 00113. I skipped over that, but yes, this is the preliminary plat. And we have a representative by chance?
I believe Glenn Nettles is here to represent.
Okay, I will, uh, if you're interested in saying anything, Mr. Nettles, uh, go ahead and unmute.
All right, I'm here for any questions.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time and ask for anyone that would like to speak to please raise that electronic hand. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask the commission for questions or motion.
Ready for a motion, I'll make it.
We're ready.
Move to approve, dinner item nine with all staff comments.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Amber, can you do a roll call on that?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Lazimby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yeah.
Hey, motion carries. Now we're going to move on to item number 10, which is Links Crossing Phase Three, PL 2021 00114. This is the final plat for the same property. Ms. Kennedy?
Uh, correct. That pretty much sums it up.
Okay, I could go with that. Okay, no public hearing required. Commission, motion or, or questions?
I move to approve PL 2021 00114 with all staff comments.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, let's see here. Now we're on to Links Crossing Phase Three A. This is a preliminary plat approval, PL 2021 00120. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, similar to the previous phase that we just discussed. This was a preliminary plat originally come through in 2019, located in DDH. This was a preliminary plat originally come through in twenty nineteen, located in DDH, links crossing. Um, subdivision, they have kept about the same unit count for this section and are looking for approval. No comments from the public regarding this one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. You'd like to speak, raise that electronic hand. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at this time. And I'll ask for any questions, comments, or emotions from the commission.
Well, I move for approval of links crossing phase three A, revised preliminary plat, uh, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. Amber, can you do a roll call, please?
Bridges?
Yeah.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries on to item number twelve. This is links crossing phase three A, PL twenty twenty one zero zero one two one, and this is the final plat approval for the same property. Ms. Kennedy.
That is correct. Um, the only additional comments for this final plat versus the preliminary plat were some discussion about uh, extending some of the proposed easements to include some items that were seen on the, um, engineering drawings. The applicant has done so, and that will be, um, ready to go if you all see fit to approve this to where easements are included for all of the new development.
Is that, is that, um, included in the comments? It's not jumping out at?
Yes, that was an engineering comment for this final plat.
Okay, I see. All right.
Just to let you know that that has been addressed already.
Okay. Okay, this requires no public hearing, so I'll be looking for a question for comments or motion.
I'll make another motion to approve, uh, PL twenty twenty one zero zero one two one with any and all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, let's see, we're on to number thirteen. This is east Veterans Bungalows, PL twenty twenty one zero zero one two two. And it's a conditional use, um, recommendation to the city council for conditional use of a performance residential development. Mr. Kip.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, initial use request is stated for a multiple unit development. Uh, it's located on East Veterans Boulevard and CDD. Zoning District, the property is owned by Savannah and Williamsburg LLC, and they're represented by Brett Basquen Forsight Group LLC. Um, the subject property is largely, um, surrounded by CDD, although to the, uh, west, it's, uh, properties in the county. Well, here is a proposed site plan that we saw at a packet meeting, um, originally. And, uh, there's pretty minor comments that you'll see in the staff report. Uh, the use is somewhat in conflict with the future land use plan. However, we recognize that, uh, residential use here makes more sense and is less of a nuisance than a red service use, which is most of the uses, um, as you go towards South College Street, a lot of these are office, you know, uh, rated service, commercial support, et cetera. Uh, so residential use at this location, uh, makes a lot more planning sense than those types of uses. Because of that, staff recommends approval of this use at this location. Um, based on the comments that we heard at packet meeting, the applicant has provided a, um, revised site plan showing a single access or single driveway. Um, we've put this up here just for kind of informational purposes, but we would like, uh, staff would like to review this at the DRT level. Um, have not reviewed this particular site plan in full detail. Um, the applicant is on the line, or the representative is, is on the line, and here's an arrow of the image. Do not receive any communication on this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Basquen, you have anything you'd like to say?
Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, great, thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time for East Veterans Bungalows. If you'd like to speak, please raise that hand. And I'll turn on your microphone. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and give it back to the commission for questions, comments, or motion.
Ms. Chairman, I'd recommend approval of item thirteen with the new of layout, plat layout. It's a thing we talked about it at the pack meeting. And also include the requirement for the continued staff review as was suggested.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Amber, can you do a roll call, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item number fourteen, Martin Avenue Town Homes.
Can I interrupt just one second?
Absolutely.
Matt, was your, um, statement about the orientation of the site plan or the revised site plan, was that a recommendation? Or was that a stipulation of your motion?
That was a stipulation of the motion, and I think they proposed that, and that's what we talked at the packing meeting. It wasn't a recommendation in the motion.
Okay, uh, staff wanted the opportunity to review this during the, the development review team?
I, I included that in the language at the end, uh, in addition to the regular staff.
Oh, did you? Okay, I didn't hear that part.
You did.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Maybe more.
Uh, Martin Town Homes, PL twenty twenty one zero zero one two five, uh, recommendation city council for conditional use for a performance, another performance, uh, residential development. Mr. Kip.
Sir, this is a request for a four block townhome development located on Martin Avenue in the RDD vending districts. Um, the property is surrounded by RDD and there's a single family, uh, to the west and a single family to the east, but also a mix of duplexes, apartments, um, student housing type developments. Um, here is the site plan for the property. Uh, minor comments from staff, and staff does recommend approval as it meets the future land use designation. Happy to answer any questions, and I don't know if we have a representative on the line. Uh, Glenn, perhaps?
If you, uh, are representing this item, if you can raise your electronic hand, that would be helpful. Okay, same, okay, Mr. Nettles. I'll go ahead and unmute your mic in case we need to. You, you have anything you want to speak or just answer some questions?
I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'm going to open the, the public hearing at this time. Anybody would like to speak about this item, the Martin Avenue Town Homes, please raise that electronic hand. Okay, Elia Card is first. Go ahead and unmute your mic and let us know what you think.
Um, my name is Elia Card. I live at four fifty Martin Avenue, so I live right next to this property. Um, and, um, we spoke about this property some time ago. And, um, about a multifamily unit, and I was, I was, I objected then as I object now uh, to this because, um, you know, when is enough is enough with the multifamily units and, and all the townhomes in, in a single family, uh, neighborhood. I know that I have some to the left, but I don't want to be boxed in. I have apartments to the back of me over the fence. I have some to the left of me, and then if you put those in there, that kind of box me in. You know, they just got, they just built a house, a single family home across the street at four seventy Martin Avenue, uh, which might not be on your plans, but, uh, to the left, I mean, to your right there. Uh, right across and, and right in front of that, that property there, there's a, a, a new home that was built by Holland Homes, so uh, they'll walk right out and look right into that, and I'll be looking at it from the side. Um, I know I've seen the designs, they got privacy fence all the way around, but, uh, you know, my, my sentiments again is just when is enough is enough. Uh, I, I, I spoke to Mr. Thor some time ago. I'm like, why just put a single family home there? Just, just do like the, the lot across the street. Uh, just put another single family home there and sell the property. Uh, I just, I don't think you guys would want that in your neighborhood, and I know I don't want it in mine. You know, and sometimes we got to say, hey, uh, enough is enough. Thanks for hearing me.
Okay. Thank you for speaking. Um, okay, let's hang on, bear with me for just a second here. Um, Vance and or Sharon Holland, just unmute and you can speak. You have to unmute your microphone. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sir. I'm at, uh, four six seven Martin Avenue, and I agree with what Cobb just said. We, we do have enough over here. And stepping out my house, looking into apartments between two houses, that's not right. We already have enough traffic, traffic up and down this road with, uh, students. They don't know how to slow down. They get here and they, they race them down the road. We don't need no more apartments. Please don't put no more apartments in a family neighborhood. You put in all the families out in the country. And I, I fully agree with Cobb, and I appreciate y'all hearing me out. Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you for speaking.
Don't do it, please.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Um, what, um, it's like, you know, I guess I can feel some of the pain of our speakers here tonight, but what I'd like to have somebody that knows a little bit better than I do elaborate on is the fact that this is zoned RDD. And there was a, you know, there's some history behind why there's RDD zoning maybe in this area, and it's about trying to, to develop as much as, you know, um, I don't know if as much as we can, but I don't know, Dr. McCord, can you maybe elaborate? I hate to pick on you, but, you know,
Well.
do you know what's behind, you, you've been around long enough to know what's behind RDDs and why we're in this situation?
RDD was developed as a way of, of offering some kind of incentives to redevelop property that had, that was in need of our areas of the city that needed redevelopment, had to do with, uh, age, uh, lack of, uh, you know, economic activity in that particular community. So that's why that is in there. Now, that does not mean that conditional uses should be allowed anywhere in the RDD. That's why the conditional use is in there. It's, these, these kind of units are conditional based on the circumstances within the RDD. The RDD is not homogeneous. It's, it's mixture, and some even have commercial in certain parts of the city that are zoned RDD. So the reason then is to help stimulate, uh, through incentivizing by a little bit more density, uh, development. But while you've asked me, let me ask a question of staff. Looking at the aerial that's on the screen, it looks like that all of the buildings to the east, all the way to Pitt Street, and to the north and to the northwest seem to be single housing units. Is that about correct?
Mostly correct. Um, I know that some new construction that has been going on in this, along Spring Street is actually ADDUs, which are now permitted by Rite. Um, there are also some duplexes in the area, so they might look like single family, but there's, there are a few duplexes mixed in there.
So, so the, oh, okay, but they're allowable, but they're not there now. Is that correct?
Which development type?
And in the area north where you said that ADDs, uh, I mean, you know.
Some, some of them are under construction currently. There's one here that's under construction currently. Um, and I know we've reviewed plans on a few others.
So that one up at the top of Spring Street, you should be able to see, it looks like one structure, but there's two sidewalks that go to the building. That's more than likely a duplex?
Yeah. Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to find is a pattern. Usually when you, uh, move from, from one density to the other, there's usually some transition. You've got apartments to the left of Mr. Cobb. I think he's the one that lives to the west of this property. Is that correct? All right, you've got it there. Then you've got a single family home, and then all the way to the east on Martin Street, it appears to Pitt Street is single family homes. So what, what this looks like at this particular time, that we're putting our, the proposal is to put four townhomes, uh, which don't have to be bad uses at all, but townhomes right there, and as he says, it sandwiches him in between, uh, multiple unit uses and separates him from that natural flow all the way to Pitt Street on his street of, of single family homes. That's all I'm observing. Now, I missed the packet meeting, and I'm sure y'all discussed this more at that time. But, uh, staff, again, am I incorrect in saying, although to the north, about four lots up, there are some some multi-unit, uh, dwellings coming in, but on Martin Street from Mr. Cobb's property to Pitts on either side of the street, looks like they're fairly, uh, individual houses on that street. Is that, is that correct, staff?
Yeah, I'd say in this, in this general part, it does appear to be single family in the neighborhood overall. I'd say it's mixed.
Yeah, overall, it's mi, it is mixed, but what I, I can, I can sympathize with, with Mr. Cobb being sitting there being the first house in that row of single family homes, and all of a sudden now, there's going to be four townhomes uh, next door to him on one side, and on the other side is, is an apartment complex.
It just appears that, like you said, it's mixed, that you're growing, the density's growing from the west towards the east.
Yeah.
With all this redevelopment over time, and it's just the nature of the zoning area.
Yeah, but we jumped, we jumped a single family home, is all I'm saying.
Right.
And I'm, I'm struggling here. We're trying to come up with the compatibility, and that's what we all have to consider in performance, uh, uses, is that, uh, is this particular use, although it's allowable in that zone, and there's so, um, many of them in that zone, is, are these, is this use compatible at this particular location with the properties in the nearby vicinity? Would it have negative impacts, uh, if they are, can we mitigate?
When would, uh, you know, if, if we assume that we, uh, pass this, when would city council see it and, and act on it?
It's scheduled to go to, um, council on Tuesday, this next Tuesday.
Okay, so that'd be another opportunity for people to speak their mind about the, the activity here. Okay. That brings us to, uh, sir. That brings us to, sir, anybody like to make a motion on this?
Well, to bring things to a head, I move that PL one twenty five Martin Avenue Townhomes request for conditional use approval be denied.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Now let me make sure I, we have the motion right, so we're gonna
Not approved.
Right, so I'm trying to make sure I understand how we say the, we had this problem last meeting or a couple of meetings ago about denying what has been requested to be approved by the staff, so.
Say yes if we don't want it and no.
That's what I'm getting at. Yeah, what do we, how do we, we're voting no if you, if you want, wait a minute.
Because we're voting on the motion, so therefore, yes, we are agreeing that's no.
So yes is denial.
Correct, Mark.
There we go. That's where I was getting to. Okay. So we have a motion in a second to deny this, and Amber, will you do a roll call, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
No.
Lazemby?
Yes.
Marshall?
I'll say no.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, so that looks like the motion passes. What was the vote number there, Amber?
Five to four.
Okay. So motion carries. Okay, the last item for tonight on new businesses, Ridge, the Ridge Crest redevelopment. PL twenty twenty one zero zero one four eight. And this is also a, this is a conditional reuse request for institutional use of community housing services, and so in the Ridge Crest development. Now, Ms. Robison?
Yes, this is a request from the Auburn Housing Authority to redevelop the existing Ridge Crest development. They are requesting approval, conditional use approval for institutional uses which include community housing and daycare uses and as well as an office use, and it's located at nine forty five North Donahue Drive in R D D. As you can tell by the zoning map here, the proximity map, there are several different zoning classifications in its surrounding area. There's a variety of uses existing. There are multifamily, duplex, single family residents, institutional uses across the street from Donahue at the church. And while this is in a medium density residential future land use and the institutional use is not compatible with that designation, the Ridge Crest development has been in this location since the fifties, and essentially the areas around it have developed since then. And it's very compatible with the surrounding uses, so while it's not in line with the future land use map, it definitely is in keeping with the neighborhood. They will be, they will be replacing the hundred and six units that are currently there with one hundred and six new units. And that will be completed in two phases. The existing daycare center and the existing offices, administrative offices for the Housing Authority will remain. And then there is a potential third phase on the south of the property along Vidal Drive that will house seniors. I believe seventy units are proposed for the senior housing and everything else will remain the same. Like I said, a hundred and six units. The daycare and the office will remain, and then the future phase of the senior housing. And I did not receive any correspondence. Although Logan is saying that he has received a question just informational purposes. And we do recommend approval. And I do believe the executive director for the Housing Authority is with Sharon Tolbert as well as David Garcia.
Okay, I have, I've turned on the microphones for both of them and asked if you have any comments, but we also, one of the things that we addressed at our packet meeting, there was some some discussion on this about how people will be, you know, we're gonna basically have to work on empty buildings, right? So how are the people gonna be taken care of in terms of moving them on or whatever the case may be? So can we get a little information on that?
I'll let Sharon and or David respond to that. I will say that a few years ago, I guess maybe now, ten years ago, Moton Village was redeveloped.
Is that right on M L K Drive that?
It is. So I'm sure they had to go through the same procedure then, and it's requirements that they have to meet for home, but I'll let Sharon elaborate on that.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you all for your time. Katie, thank you so much for allowing us to be on the agenda. Just to kind of give you a little overview, I'm Sharon Tolbert, CEO of the Auburn Housing Authority. This initiative is, was approved by Board of Commissioners as part of our five-year strategic plan regarding affordable housing. The Housing Authority manages three hundred and four affordable housing units throughout the community, and as has been reported, this is part of our redevelopment initiative. Our whole goal is to remove the institutional look of public housing and to make our properties look more market rate and to not only invest in the northwest Auburn community, but more importantly, to invest in the residents that we serve. Our residents are extremely low to low-income families, and we want them to be able to benefit with all, to benefit from all of the new development that's going on throughout our community. So we're just reinvesting in our families to enhance their standing of living. To answer the questions about relocation, we have a line item regarding relocation expenses that will be at our expense, at our expense. The families that we currently serve will be the same family that we serve upon redevelopment. They would be, they have a right to return. We will take care of all of the relocation expenses. We're here to take care of our families, and this is part of taking care of the families that we serve. So I do appreciate you all's consideration to approve this, this item. This is one of many redevelopment options that we're looking at doing, and our primary goal is to provide housing opportunities for all of the families that we serve. And as you know, that the families that we serve were more at an economic disadvantage, so we want to provide them the same opportunities that other residents have that most time is a little bit more challenging. So we're just trying to invest in our families, invest in our community, and also invest in Northwest Auburn. As has been reported, I do have our developer on the line, David Garcia, and also we have our architect on the line as well, so we're here to answer any questions that you all may have of us. And David, since there were our questions about relocation, would you mind elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sharon, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. My name is David Garcia. I'm Vice President of Development with Michael's Development. I live here in Auburn. My address is fifteen oh six Elise Lane, Auburn. To answer your question about relocation, this will be a two-phase project. They are, there are currently a hundred and six units. This first phase will only involve the two parcels that are directly on Donahue Drive. So it'll involve sixty-two units. What will generally happen is we would find out if we get awarded tax credits sometime this summer, but there's typically a six to nine-month process after that until you actually close. So once we find out, we if we get funded, we would then try and get the occupancy at that property as low as possible, so we would generally not lease units when residents have to move out for any reason, and we try and get that sixty-two units down to a, you know, fifty or fifty-five units. From that point, we would also work with the Auburn Housing Authority to see what other units might be available within their Auburn portfolio, and if there are a handful of vacancies at some of their other properties that could temporarily relocate some of these families, we would obviously try and use that too. But when it comes down to it, there will still likely be a number of units that will have to be temporarily relocated during this construction period. So as Sharon mentioned, we would hire an outside relocation consultant that would work alongside our management team and the Auburn Housing Authority to do resident interviews to determine their specific needs, to try and identify what adjacent properties might have vacancies, and then we generally negotiate with those property owners and property management firms to bulk lease a number of units in each of those properties. So if, for instance, if we need to find thirty units, we would go to the three or four nearby properties and see if we could get five to ten units at each of those properties for the construction period, and our relocation budget would pay, like I said, for the consultant, it would pay for any moving supplies, it would pay to physically move these individuals from the property to their new apartments that they would be until they can come back. We would pay for COVID cleaning of the units, and then once the rehabilitation's complete, the new construction is complete, we would pay to move them back in. So we would do everything we can to try and house these individuals in nearby properties, at least the ones that we couldn't find within the Auburn Housing Authority's existing portfolio.
Great, that's, that's a good rundown. This is an important important project for sure. Okay. Does any of the commission have any questions for the two of them before I open the public hearing? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. So anybody that would like to speak about this, the Ridge Crest redevelopment, please raise that electronic hand. And I see no one, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, then ask for questions, comments, or emotions from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very excited about this project. I'm so glad to see the city doing this. And the only question I had was about the relocation, and that was answered thoroughly, so I would love to move to approve PL twenty twenty one zero zero one four eight.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Amber, can you do a roll call for us?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Lazemby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, and that brings us to the end of our agenda. Let me just, I wanna make, just it's my own mind, the vote we had on those townhomes, we denied that conditional use request, right?
Recommended denied.
Okay, good. I don't have anything else. Do, does the staff have anything?
I was going to let you guys know that the text amendments for the downtown development design changes will go to the paper on Monday, and Jay has put all of them in ordinance form, and I'm gonna review all of those and email them to you tomorrow if y'all want to take a look at them and make sure that we've covered everything. And if you have any questions or you see something that you didn't think was how it was, or how you thought it was going to be when the proposals were given, let us know so we can correct that, and we, like I said, this will go to the paper on Monday for advertisement, so you can consider it at your April meeting.
Hey, you know, I have, I do have a question. I asked, I sent you an email, and I did not look at your response yet. I just got it recently, and I just kind of got sidetracked. Is that, you know, the step back sort of idea on the buildings that are going in downtown, is that a consideration for the D D R C? I guess, is it gonna be in an ordinance, or what is it gonna be there?
It was contemplated to put into the zoning ordinance.
Okay, this is just a, like a, kind of a, the voluntary sort of thing. It's not binding.
Now, there's some language in the current design guidelines, not in the zoning ordinance, about step backs.
That's what I mean, yeah. That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, that's, that's in the design guidelines, but no, there's no language in the proposed zoning text amendments that would do that.
Yeah, I think we tried to step back when this was first, when it first came up with the Urban Core Task Force back in oh six, I believe, and I think we changed that pretty quickly.
And so that's in, that's in place, that's not going away?
It's, it's in the guidelines. It's kind of a recommendation, you know, here's something that you can do to achieve this look kind of thing.
Okay.
All right, it's not a requirement.
Okay, well, I'll look forward to see what you got. Yes, sir.
That's it.
Okay, we call, I call this meeting adjourned, by golly. Have a good evening, everybody.
Good evening, uh.
Take care now.